Good morning Birmingham. Good morning Birmingham. Today is nine thirty-three, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. I call to order the meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today's invocation will be led by Elder Wondell Brantley, Associate Pastor of More Than Conquered St. Faith Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilor Carol Clark. If you're willing and able, please stand and join.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to come. I count it as an honor to stand before and pray over this great city of Birmingham. If you will bow your heads with me. Father, in Jesus' name. God, we come to you and we ask for your wisdom today. Lord, we ask for your power because we can't do anything without you. Lord, we know that you are too wise to make a mistake. So we pray for this city. We pray for our mayor of this city. Lord, we pray for this council president. We also pray for the entire council staff, the supporting staff, the entire city government. We bring them before you this morning. And we ask you to cause them to work together in unity today. Lord, let this mind be in them, which was also in Christ Jesus. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity because you gave us life today and you've given us life more abundant. So we speak blessings over the city of Birmingham, that we are a city united together. Lord, not only that, but we thank you for all the blessings that you're going to bestow upon this city with the decisions that will be made during this meeting and the meetings to come. Lord, we thank you for economic development, Lord, that will enhance the growth and the development of this great city. Lord, we ask you right now, Lord, we pray for our police department, for our fire department, Lord, for every single department in this city. Lord, we pray for all ninety-nine neighborhoods, God. Lord, that you would just move. We bind crime today. We ask you right now, Lord, that you would just rest upon us. Like the dew in the morning, we thank you for your presence and we thank you for the peace of God. Lord, that peace that surpasses all understanding. And Lord, we just thank you for what you're going to do today and for everything that is done, we'll be careful to give you the praise, the honor, and the glory. It's in your precious name we pray. Amen, and let every glad heart say amen.
Thank you very much, Elder Brantley. Good morning, Mr. Clark. Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
If you'll call the roll for us, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Good morning. Councilmember Woods. President Pro Tem Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning. And Council President Alexander.
Good morning, thank you very much. Councilors, you've had an opportunity to read the minutes and I'm requesting a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from the previous meetings of February seventh and February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move for approval?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, those minutes are approved. Councilors, the minutes are not ready from February twenty-one, twenty twenty-three through May ninth, twenty twenty-three. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Do not lean in, just speak. Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning.
Good morning to the entire council. As well as good morning to the public. Madam President, I want to provide a mayor's report that includes a proposed twenty-twenty-four budget, but before I do that, I want to give a few highlights, an update for the week. One is this is Mental Health Month. This is Mental Health Month. And combined with our Food Truck Friday, we will blend those two worlds as we highlight and promote mental health awareness. The other thing I would like for, as a request to this body, to this council, Madam President, is that for everyone of us to amplify the message of advocating for better mental health for all of Birmingham. And so this Friday, May nineteenth, the city of Birmingham will join Dr. Crystal Mullen Johnson for Mental Health Awareness Day in Lynn Park from ten a.m. to two p.m. There will be a host of things. This list is not exhaustive, but will include such as chair massages or licensed professional counselor providing depression screenings, speakers, free resources, giveaways, yoga class, blood pressure checks, and much more. And let me not forget actual local food trucks that will begin serving from eleven a.m. and will conclude at two p.m. And so, council, I hope you all can join. I hope you all can share with your residents and within your respective districts that this is a city event and mental health awareness is extremely important for us as a community, a nation, and the world. Second note, Madam President and council, is the Birmingham restaurants and bars can now register to participate in something that we're calling Magic City SIPS. That's S-I-P-S, Magic City SIPS. It is a summer-long, citywide, happy hour event series that will take place Wednesdays throughout the months of June, July, and August. It's led by the City of Birmingham's Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. And SIPS has a very simple notion, which is to highlight and support local establishments, encouraging patronage throughout the summer months. SIPS will formally kick off after Memorial Day, the last Wednesday of this month, May thirty-first. And restaurants and bars may get more information and register online at birminghamal.gov/sips. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/sips. An update related to recycling. Many of you all know that the place we use had a fire last week. And so due to the recent fire and recovery efforts at the Birmingham Recycling and Recovery Facility, the City of Birmingham will not provide curbside recycling pickup for residents tomorrow. The commercial recycling facility is not currently accepting mixed residential recycling from municipalities. The facility did reopen yesterday to accept clean source separated loads of cardboard and/or paper from commercial haulers and businesses. An additional note, residents may also drop off mixed recyclable materials in the facility's community bins. The city remains in contact with Birmingham Recovery and Recycling, recycling and recovery, that is, and will continue to provide updates concerning curbside recycling services as new information becomes available. We'll be sure to share this with the council as well for you all to continue to drive the message to constituents across the city. And we want to encourage updates. For those who want updates related to recycling, please text BHA-M READY to eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. Again, that's BHA-M READY to eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. Two more notes. One is related to bulk trash and uniform trash. City of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup with daily updates online at birminghamal.gov/bulktrash. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/bulktrash. Related to uniform trash bins, as a reminder, those residents using the new carts, you should place them in front of your homes. Any household garbage placed on the ground or in alleys or on the ground in front of your residence will not be picked up. You can receive more updates by going to birminghamal.gov/pickup or by texting BHA-M READY to eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. As a friendly reminder, Madam President, council, and the public, this May is also Historic Preservation Month. Historic Preservation Month. And the city's Historic Preservation Staff has developed a month-long itinerary of events to bring awareness as well as education to the value and benefits of historic preservation into many facets of the city's Historic Preservation Program within the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. Today, starting at noon, so that's the day of twelve, attendees can learn about the Historic Preservation Tax Incentives. The free talk will take place here at the Battle Auditorium. And then next Tuesday, people can learn more, residents can learn more about Birmingham's new adaptive reuse incentive for historic buildings. This talk will take place in the Birmingham Public Library in the Arrington Auditorium Room at twelve noon. For more information about the Historic Preservation Month and these two events, please call two zero five-two-five-four-two-four-two-four or dial two zero five-two-five-four-two-four-seven-nine. Madam President and council, at this time, I would like Mr. Ken Berg to come up. Ken Berg is the music director of the Birmingham Boys Choir. They are celebrating fifty. Their fiftieth anniversary, so fifty years of bringing an amazing sound and impact to the community. And so before Mr. Berg comes up and says something to you all in the public, I would just like to say a few things. Birmingham Boys Choir consists of one hundred and forty boys who have used their talents to sing all around the world. Unfortunately, they are unable to join us today because they are all in their final weeks of school and have testing. Still, we do not want to let this special moment and this special anniversary pass without recognizing them. And so we would like to celebrate this milestone with a proclamation that I will read in part. And it states, whereas the Birmingham Boys Choir was established in the late nineteen-sixties at the Episcopal Church of the Advent by the Reverend Alan Walker, it was in nineteen seventy-three that, with the support of a group of dedicated parents, that the current iteration of the Birmingham Boys Choir began. And whereas under the exceptional leadership of Director Susan and Ken Berg, who have been with the choirs for forty-five, forty-five of its fifty years, the Birmingham Boys Choir Foundation was incorporated in nineteen seventy-three to support and further the mission of training boys through music and the unique sound of the Boys Choir. Whereas the Birmingham Boys Choir has grown in both number and recognition under the guidance of Ken and Susan Berg with the addition of summer camp training, tours across the United States and in foreign countries, and the continued efforts of the boys and their parents in fundraising and support. And whereas the Birmingham Boys Choir, dedicated to training boys through music, has had a profound impact on our community, instilling in its members values of discipline, teamwork, artistic expression, and preparing them for success in all aspects of life. Now therefore, I, Rando L. Whitton, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby issue this proclamation celebrating the Birmingham Boys Choir fiftieth anniversary. And the City of Birmingham encourages all residents to join recognizing as well as celebrating the achievements of the Birmingham Boys Choir over the past half-century. Mr. Berg, to you and your wife, to the choir, and for all you all have done over the last fifty years, congratulations. Madam President, at this time, since Hunter William didn't want to stand, I'll let Mr. Berg say something.
Thank you, Council Mayor, for acknowledging our boys. They are dear. And I want you to know that as we travel with our boys, every other year, we take a representative group of boys on tour all over the United States and basically all over the world. When we tour domestically, I hear the, I want you to know two things about this. I hear people say, now Birmingham, Birmingham, that's the city with the dogs and the fire hoses, right? Which gives me a chance to say, yes, it is our history, but look how far we've come. Look at what these boys, who don't look alike, but look what they can do and create and the beauty and the joy that they have of being together. And the second thing I want you to know is I have in my phone video of desk clerks at hotels, restaurant managers, airport personnel saying, oh my goodness, when we saw that we're going to have a group of fifty boys coming through on tour, we kind of said, battening down the hatches, hold on. But you can bring these kids here anytime. They are so well behaved. They are joyful. They're kind, they're good, they're, you can tell they like each other. So we are proud of our city. We are proud to be representatives of our city. And I would like to take a moment to first invite you to our fiftieth, no, forty-fifth annual spring concert tonight at seven o'clock at Mountain Brook Baptist Church, which there aren't many rooms that are large enough to handle our choir. So we are thankful to be there. And it'll be a pretty spectacular show. It's free, it's our gift to the public. But also, I want you to know that we appreciate the work that our mayor does, the work that our city council does, to provide for the city of Birmingham a safe, joyful, beautiful place to raise kids. We've raised good boys here and we thank you for all you do and the good work that you do. And ask you keep it up and come hear the boys sing. I think you'd be pleased.
Thank you very much.
Madam President and council, as well as the public, that concludes the mayor's report. Madam President and council, if it's okay with you, I will go straight into presenting the twenty-twenty-four City of Birmingham Proposed Budget. As I do that, you have a couple of team members that are walking up and will actually give you this budget book. And I'll, before I go into some numbers and talk about the budget as they present this book to you, there are a couple of people I would like to recognize as three groups. One is starting with the Birmingham Finance Department, led by Kevin Moore. I would like for him to stand along with Diana Bolden, manager of the budget. Lucia Coleman, Robert Abraham, Kyle Guy, Cornita Washington, and Latrice Abraham Everett. I would like to thank these people you see standing up for putting in a considerable amount of time. These, majority of these people, employees, that is, are civil servants, but they have dedicated a considerable amount of energy and time, late nights, week, after-five, as well as weekends, and making sure we prepare and present to this council and to this public a balanced budget. So you all, you can take your seat, but thank you so much for your hard work. Also, I want to thank Chaz Mitchell in the mayor's office, who has definitely been a source of considerate help in this budget process as well. Thank you, Chaz. And then to this council, I want to thank you all as well. As we continue to build on everything we've laid out and the two tranches of offer dollars, as we continue to build on this recent surplus of the things related to what we're doing in our communities, related to neighborhood revitalization, making the right investments in our people, our youth, and our public. Today, to this council, to this, to our public, to our residents, I present to you a five-hundred-and-fifty-four-million-dollar operating budget. This operating budget, yes, ma'am?
We're having a little trouble hearing you. Is there a way they can adjust his sound?
What about now, Madam President?
You're much better. And what was that number you?
Oh, you want me to?
I want to say it one more time.
Yes, ma'am. The City of Birmingham Mayor's Office is honored to present to this council and to the public a five-hundred-and-fifty-four-million-dollar operating proposed budget. As I stated, I'll repeat this, since you may have had a hard time hearing me. What we want to do with this budget is leverage the recently approved sixty million dollars in the budget surplus as well as continue to move forward with the one hundred and forty million from the offer dollars. Again, just, it's worth repeating. These combined budgets help us continue to prioritize neighborhood revitalization, the necessary investments in our people, our employees, as well as our youth and public safety. So to get into it, the first thing is around neighborhood revitalization. And you'll have ample time to go through the book. We'll have ample time to discuss this, but I do want to highlight a few things. The first is neighborhood revitalization. Coming in with street paving. Last year, this council approved ten million dollars out of the general fund budget. I present to this council today fifteen million, an additional five million dollars for a total of fifteen million in street paving. From our surplus of eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, this budget, I would like to add an additional two-hundred-thousand dollars for sidewalk repair. We've intentionally decreased our funding for demolition to one million, but we've increased our re-abatement to two million. And our focus is on city property in order, which includes right-of-ways and parks. And then with funding leftover private lots that the city is not responsible for. We will include investment in recycling again at three-hundred thousand. And then I want to move from neighborhood revitalization as it relates to place to talk about people. That first group of people are our youth. So coming in this, again, this year, we're supporting the Birmingham Promise with two million dollars. We're supporting mental health at one million dollars. Continuation of supporting conflict, investing in conflict resolution through the Common Ground Heat Curriculum Program of one million dollars. As well as the Continued Financial Literacy Program, called the BHM Financial Freedom Project, investing in our youth and their future, one million dollars. The Continued Necessary Investment of the Safe Haven Program with parking wreck at half a million dollars. In addition to that, the Restore Juvenile Reentry Program at two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand and Kids and Jobs at two-hundred-and-ten thousand. We also believe that in order to have a strong neighborhood, you need vibrant, efficient, dependable public transportation. So with that, we are investing sixteen-point-five million dollars in public transportation. That includes eleven million dollars for fixed routes, three million dollars for BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, and an addition of two-point-five million dollars for Birmingham On-Demand Via. Related to our personnel, please recall, since May twenty-two, not once but twice, the city has provided two-five percent cost of living adjustments for all employees in addition to funding our, funding merit and longevity pay. The twenty-twenty-four budget will provide a five percent cost of living adjustment for police and fire. Merit of five percent will be available for two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-five eligible employees. The longevity pay will be available for one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five eligible employees. In addition to that, related to healthcare benefits costs, the city will fund four-point-seven-five percent of an eight-point-seven-five percent increase in healthcare benefits. Related to our pension, recall that a few years back, we did some heavy lifting and some unpopular things to make sure we got our pension right. And so we're funding our pension contribution at thirty-nine-point-six million dollars. Again, that's roughly forty million, but to be exact, thirty-nine-point-six million dollars for our pension as well as for our R and R, I'm sorry, for our F and P for police and fire, thirteen-point-three million. As we continue on the necessary investments of public infrastructure and neighborhood revitalization, you can't do that without capital improvement. So part of that capital improvement includes one-point-five million for deferred maintenance, a rolling stock of five million dollars. Please consider the carryover of the eight million dollars from the surplus. So add in addition to this five million, that's thirteen million, but for the budget proposed to you, an additional five million dollars related to the things you all care about. Equipment for stormwater, more equipment for public works, more equipment and, as well as vehicles for our police department. In addition to that, capital improvements include one-point-three million dollars for the upgraded portions of twenty-four of our thirty-two fire dorms. So each of you all know we have thirty-two fire stations in our city. They just, our employees, our firefighters just don't work there, they live there. We have some pretty seasoned facilities. Seasoned is a cool word, right? They require some upgrades. So with this, with this proposed budget, we're recommending to you a one-point-three million to upgrade twenty-four of the thirty-two dorms. Please note that some notables. One is the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. Every year, through our contractual relationship, we do a million dollars for their operating expenses. But this year, we needed to do an additional million. Put in a separate that will go into capital projects related to actual capital needs for the actual facility, relates to the interior of it, to make sure we continue to support them and they can keep their standing related to being an institute. The City Council's Safe Summer Concert Series will continue at two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Workman Mountain has an increase for a total of quarter million. Ray Mountain Park has an increase for a total of a quarter million. And Vulcan Park has an increase as well. Public libraries will receive an increase of nearly one million dollars towards personnel. And please recall that the budget surplus provided additional investments and capital projects for several of the library's facilities as well, interior as well as exterior. Madam President, we believe this proposed budget that is balanced, represents a combination of priorities that the administration has deemed, talking with councilors has deemed, most importantly, listening to the citizens of Birmingham. Every year, this council knows this, but it's worth saying publicly. Every year, this council and mayor has supported investing in street paving out of our general fund. Many administrations collective prior to us, mayor and council, have only gone to the bond market, but only at limited dollars. So if you recall, since two thousand eighteen, when you add this proposed budget of fifteen million dollars for street paving, over five years, we've done sixty-three million dollars worth of street paving. And that's to be noted, and that's a thank you to you all. So we'll continue to make the necessary investments in neighborhood revitalization, starting with the basics of city infrastructure that relates to the street paving and many other things you all care about and the citizens you serve and represent care about as well. Madam President and council, that is the presentation for this year's budget. Look forward over the next few weeks going, taking a deeper dive with you as well as the public.
Thank you very much, Mayor Whitton, for presenting this budget to us. Of course, we will take it onto consideration and want to review. And we appreciate bringing it to us today so that we can start this process. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you all so much.
Thank you. At this time, councilors, we'll return to the agenda. I'd like to reflect item number one, which is the resolution brought forth by our Budget and Finance Chair, Smitherman. And, Smitherman, I'll turn it over to you.
Excuse me. Would you like me to read item one first?
All right, that's fine.
Yes, go ahead, thank you.
A resolution setting a public hearing on the mayor's proposed budgets. And just need a motion and second.
Son of? Okay, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mayor Whitton, for presenting the general fund budget and capital budget and the budget message for FY twenty-twenty-four. I still would like to say thank you, really on behalf of the council, to the finance department and Kevin Moore. I'm not really a numbers person, but I know you guys have spent countless hours crunching the numbers and creating a balanced budget. It's hard personally to balance a budget and I know it's very difficult to do. What was it, Mayor Whitton? Five-hundred-and-fifty-four-million-dollar budget. So I want to say thank you and always to Chief Mitchell. He's one of the smartest people I know. He really is the numbers guy. You are. But now, as budget chair, I will accept the budget. And councilors, we have about six weeks to do our due diligence. You know, this is like the number one thing we are required to do. Go through the budget, talk with our neighborhood officers, talk with ourselves, the mayor. And I'm very excited to hear about this process. this process again, because I think this is the second one for the newbies, and the rest of us is about four or five, and Council Abbott is about, what, 21, 22 for you, so. I would now read the resolution. Whereas the mayor has submitted to the City Council the proposed general fund budget, capital budget, and budget messages for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30 of 2024, and whereas is incumbent upon the City Council to determine a place and time for a public hearing on said budget. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, that the required public hearing on the proposed general fund and capital budgets shall be held on June 5, 2023 here at the Bowel Auditorium, beginning at 5:30 p.m. The City Clerk is hereby authorized to cause for publication of the public hearing, which includes place and time of said hearing in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Birmingham, no less than seven days before the date of such hearing. Be it therefore resolved that members of the public can view and participate online or by phone via WebEx, and you can also come in person. And then the resolution has a WebEx link as well. So you can, citizens who have joined by computer and wish to speak to the item must use the raise hand button in the WebEx application. If you have joined by phone, you will be given the opportunity to speak after being recognized, after speakers are recognized using the online platform. If you have joined the meeting by telephone and would like to request to speak, dial *3 when prompted during the hearing. Please be patient, speakers will be given the usual three-minute limit for comments, adopted this 16th day of May, 2023. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions for presenting the public hearing? Yes, Mayor Whitton?
Oh, I apologize, I'll let you, well, maybe I should say before you finish your process that I failed to mention one thing, and this is to you all to share with your constituents and to the public as well. Please go to birminghamal.gov/2024budget for any citizens, for anybody to be able to see the budget online on the city's website. That's birminghamal.gov/2024budget. It's available publicly right now for everybody.
Thank you very much. That's definitely useful information. We've received this hard copy, and so we encourage all citizens to go out and review those items and be prepared when you are in neighborhood meetings. I know several of us have different methods that we share this information with our constituents, and so we also ask you to do the homework as well so that we can have very useful conversations when we're talking about your inquiries or questions or things you need to know about the budget. At this time, are there any questions, councillors, before we take the vote?
Thank you, Madam President. I was wondering if there's also a copy of the mayor's budget message on the website? Or can we, or can we get a copy? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. That's very useful as well, because we really couldn't see the numbers, I think a lot of us jotted them down, so that would be helpful, that overview that you gave, perfect. Any other questions, Mrs. Abbott?
Yes, I'd like to know if there will be copies of the budget books placed in the public libraries for people who do not maybe have access from their homes.
Yes, ma'am. Central library.
Only the central, not the branches?
Pretty rare, Ms. Abbott, but I don't, I don't recall putting them in the branches. We only recall in the past, central library as an administration, but let's talk about it.
Yeah, I would think that if you're a person who doesn't have access from home, a local library would be more important to you than the central library. That's just me.
We can discuss that, we'll take that up with the mayor, Mrs. Abbott, I think that's a good suggestion. I believe we have utilized the, they have some regional branches, I think they've got four of those, and I know we did that with our district maps, so perhaps that's something we could entertain. Thank you, that's a good suggestion. Any other questions, councillors? All right, at this time, Ms. Clark?
Yes.
In terms of, I know Pro Tem Smitherman mentioned capital, the word capital. I was just wondering, do we have sources of funding, even if they're small, for capital, for new capital projects, or TIF in this, included in this budget?
Under the chief, Chief Mitchell?
Madam President, I know this is a very intense conversation, I think we just need to kind of talk about it later, but it was presented, it's what has already been adopted by the council, especially when it comes to capital. But to your point about TIF, yes, there are TIF funds available for those within the district, but for other new capital projects, no, we don't have a specific funding source outside of what's been allocated in the Capital Improvement Fund and your Opera Fund.
Okay. I know 100 years ago, we would take the transfer in from the Birmingham Fund in those very lean years when we didn't have bond funds to fund a few new capital projects, but, and then we count resurfacing, which some consider capital, we put that in the operating, right? I mean, that's a part of the operating budget.
You refer to the 15 million?
Yes.
100% of that is the operating budget.
Okay.
I think.
It just depends on how you want to treat it, so.
We're treating it in our, in our general fund every year for the last five. I will, I will say this to each councillor and to you all collectively, because I know some of the outstanding things we want to do that are big-ticket price via tax dollars that we are not in a position to do out of our general fund. This question about the market related to warrants, or bonds, I had to think of the word, bonds, actually, in order of bonds and then warrants. What dollar amount can we get? When should we go, considering the issues that exist in the market related to interest rates, related to where we are with construction costs, et cetera? These major things, such as sidewalk repair, these major things such as facilities that include recreation centers and fire stations, these major things that include stormwater. We won't see them in this, in this proposed budget you have today, because that will be something that we will go to the market for, but we need to figure out when, we need to figure out how. The good news is, as financially, we put ourselves on good footing related to solving for our pension, which was correlated to our city's credit. So we've done that heavy lifting, and our credit is way better. Kevin O'Chace can give you more than that if you need it. And then we, we've done the parts of, a lot of refinancing our debt, and so we've cleared those two hurdles. To be in a position to say we can max out going to the bond, bond market or getting warrants, the question becomes when and how, and what's, what's going to happen over these next few months related to interest rates and the continued increase of construction costs that allows us to maximize these projects we want to do wholesale, citywide, and individually in your, in the city council districts, related to those things I named.
Yeah, and if I still have the floor, I'd just like to thank the mayor for the, for those thoughtful comments, and also, you know, just note that, you know, we may need to get a bond authorization from the citizens and not go to the market, but be in position to go if something favorable happens with the interest rates, you know, because doing the referendum, I mean, when you're trying to take advantage of the market favorability that may arise in a moment's notice, you, you know, so maybe we need the authorization to sell bonds so that we can be ready at some point in the future when the market is more favorable. I, I just feel like with the infrastructure challenges we have on the, you know, storm water, the flu, the flooding issues, you know, if we're going to be in a position at some point to start making those investments, you know, we may need to already get the citizens to support the referen, you know, through the referendum, just so we're in that ready position in the future when you think the time is right. That, that's my only comment, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and take the vote, and then I do have some follow-up, just some notes for the public.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you very much. Item number one passes. I've just been made aware, this information is already posted on the web page, the landing page that Mayor Whitton discussed. It also includes the key budget points that he presented to us this morning, as well as information regarding our, investing in our neighborhood revitalization. So I encourage everyone to go to that page, and if you have, if you have the web capability, and you'll be able to get the information that was presented to us today as well. I will work through those options for providing that in our public libraries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council Pro Tem, Madam Chair of the Budget Finance Committee. I know that we look forward to your leadership and working with us and working with the public in order to get the information out there and get the budget approved so we can get these items available and made available to our residents. Thank you very much. At this time, Madam Clerk, are there any nominations to boards and agencies?
No, ma'am, we haven't received any, received any at this time.
Thank you very much. At this time, would you give us the items that are considered for consent, please?
Yes, ma'am. The consent agenda starts on page two with items two, three, and four. Then we go over to page four, item five. Page six, item six. Page eight, item seven. Page nine, item eight. Page 11, item nine. Page 14, item 10. Please note that item 11 has been withdrawn per the mayor's office. Page 15, item 12. Page 16, item 16. Page 17, item 17, 18, 19, and 20. Page 18, items 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25. Page 19, items 26, 27, 28, and 29, and that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. At this time, councillors, are there any items that you'd like to add or remove from the consent agenda? Councilmore?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, I would like to remove item 16.
Okay, that's, I request to remove item 16 on page 16. All right, item 16 on page 16, removed from consent. Any other items, councillor? Council Abbott, yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to add item 13 on page 15 to consent.
All right, thank you, that's transparency form, item 13 added, requests is add to consent. Thank you. Any other items, councillors? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, they're indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councillors, if I could entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Some of. Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you, the consent agenda is approved. If you were here for any item that was listed as consent or has been added to consent, it has been approved. We'll continue now with the rest of our agenda. We hope you have a great day. Madam Clerk, first item?
The first item will be on page 15, that's item number 14. An ordinance rescinding Resolution Number 598-09, which required individuals or entities seeking to do business with the City of Birmingham to complete and sign a transparency and city government disclosure and certification form, and requiring individuals or entities seeking to enter into a contract or appointment, provide services, obtain funding, or otherwise do business with the City of Birmingham to complete and sign an updated and modified transparency and city government disclosure and certification form, providing certain exceptions to the requirement to complete and sign the transparency and city government disclosure and certification form, providing penalties for false statements or misrepresentations made in the transparency and city government disclosure and certification form, and establishing July 1, 2023, to be the effective date for the use of the updated transparency and city government disclosure and certification form. This is the first reading, it's a permanent, item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first to take it up.
I'm over, UC.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now we need the motion to.
Move. Second.
All right, thank you, councillors. This is an ordinance where we're rescinding, and we're putting in place the revised transparency and city government disclosure and certification form. Any questions regarding this? I know it's been presented to several of our committees, and just wanted to see if there are any questions regarding the item today. Thank you, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you, that item 14 passes. I would like to thank the Office of the City Attorney for the work that's been performed by your staff to make this form. Again, it continues the transparency, but I believe it also helps the clarity of what the information that's required and the usefulness of the form. And I think we're all in agreement, it's taken us a while to get here, but I just thank you for the diligence that your team has explained in the cooperation and working with us to be sure that it is a, a one that we feel very comfortable and useful for us. Thank you very much. All right, next item?
Excuse me, the next item is on page 16, it's item number 15. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Birmingham and Jefferson County, Alabama, for a term of three years for the purpose of the joint operation and maintenance of the traffic signals located at the intersection of Cohaba River Road and Acton Road, with the county being responsible for ownership and maintenance of the signals, to include the signal heads, supporting cables and structures, cabinets, control equipment, traffic detection devices, pertinent luminaries, and all components and wiring with set maintenance by the county, to include replacement and/or upgrade of components and devices as may be necessary, and future design changes to the traffic control at the listed location, with the county being responsible for all related expenses, and the city to continue providing electrical power to the signals as required for operation at its expense. Again, this is the first reading, it's an item of permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent first to take it up.
Some move. Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion on the item. Second.
All right, thank you, councillors. Any questions regarding this item? Council Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Chiefs or mayor, is, is this for just, is this for both installation and maintenance? Okay. Again, thank y'all for doing this type of agreement that y'all did a couple weeks ago in Jefferson County. I know that a lot of the outlying areas in my district go in and out of county jurisdiction and our municipal jurisdiction, and so it's, you know, it, we get tons of emails and calls about, especially this intersection, traffic backed up during rush hour, so really appreciate y'all doing that type of agreement with the county to get this done.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding this item? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you, item 15 passes. Next item?
The next item is also on page 16, item 16. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the city to apply, accept, and expend grant funds on behalf of the City of Birmingham to the Alabama Department of Transportation for the FY 2024 Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program Grant and, Program Grant and Accept Grant Fund Disbursement to the City of Birmingham in the amount of 1 million for the purpose of developing a raised bike lane, intersection improvements, and some street skate enhancements along 15th Avenue North and Norwood from 28th Street North, Norwood Boulevard to Caraway Boulevard. The city's. The city's match funding is $200,000.
Could be on.
Second. All right, thank you, Councilmore, you have to be removed from consent.
Yes ma'am, Madam President, thank you. I didn't know if there was anyone that could, I just, I guess, speak to this item and give a little bit more context.
I think we have Mr. Alexander coming from Department of Transportation.
Yes ma'am, Madam President, to your colleague's point, Mr. Moore, Mr. Alexander from the Department of Transportation can speak to this item.
Thank you.
Good morning, councillors. My name is Colin Alexander, I serve as senior planner with the Birmingham Department of Transportation. What's before you is a application for a TAP grant, this is the Transportation Set Aside Alternative Program. It's a grant program that's a federal grant administered by ALDOT geared towards supporting infrastructure for non-motorized forms of transportation, so typically sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera. We're eligible for a TAP grant, again, we just finished a recent TAP project, and so you have to, once you finish that is when you become eligible again. And when we were looking at locations, this became a really strong candidate. You have the redevelopment at Caraway, the old Caraway Hospital site, you have a historic neighborhood that we want to continue to invest in, and this would link the Norwood Trail, which is such a popular amenity in that neighborhood, with the new Caraway development. The proposal is to provide a raised bike lane, something sort of, think of like a, think of a separated bike facility that's going to keep bikers separated from the lane of traffic. And we think that this is a strong project, it's had a lot of community support as we've been going through the process of the applications, so.
Thank you very much, Councilmore.
Thank you. No, I just know that, you know, this is something that, you know, the Norwood neighborhood will definitely be able to enjoy and take advantage of, and so just wanted to have somebody to come and speak on behalf and give us a little bit more information about it, so, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Alexander? Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Abbott, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, is there a plan, I know it's not part of this, but a concerted effort to link bike lanes with one another so that a person can actually go on a bike trip and stay in a lane rather than having the lanes just abruptly?
Absolutely, and it takes time to develop that system, but when you look at the active projects that we have going together, I think in the next two years or so, you're really going to start seeing network develop across downtown and the north side, whether it's paving projects, street skate projects, various projects that we have going along, we do try to make sure that we are coordinating and creating a system, we're just doing it piece by piece.
But there's, there's a plan. Like, we know where they're gonna go, we just don't have the money to do it yet?
We are working on developing kind of a long-term concept, like this is where they should go. What we are doing is making sure that anytime we're doing a project, we are cross-referencing that with other projects and trying to link what we've already built with what we are building, so that each time we build something, a little piece of the network is constructed.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? Thank you very much, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, item sixteen passes. Next item?
The next item is on page thirty-seven. It's item thirty, and it's receiving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to damage to the roof of the Highland Park Pro Shop located at 3300 Highland Avenue, Birmingham, and that's just for informational purposes. The next items are on page thirty-eight. Item thirty-one is receiving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to damage to the roof of the Carver Theater located at 1631 Fourth Avenue North, Birmingham. And item thirty-two is receiving the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to damage to the roof of the Birmingham Fire Station Number Six located at 317 15th Street North, Birmingham.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And that completes all of the items on the agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, councillors, we will have the opportunity to hear your reports from your districts. Council Clerk, are you ready? Let you go first?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Well, I hope everyone had a great Mother's Day this past weekend. Everyone has a mother, or had a mother, in my case. Neighborhood meetings this week, we have the Graymont Neighborhood that will meet in person on Wednesday at 4:30 at the Smithfield Library. Also, we have, like many others, a lifeguard crisis in the city at a critical time for our youth and our overall sanity post-COVID, so we, we've invested a significant amount of money in preparing pools for the summer season, but we don't have enough lifeguards to open many of them, so, because safety is a top priority and we have to be able to operate the pools safely. Many of our communities will once again be without aquatic recreation if we don't get more lifeguards in a hurry. So we've been talking about this a while, time is really of the essence, so please encourage your fit and aquatically inclined neighbors and friends to, to apply to serve your fellow residents and especially our youth in this way this summer. The minimum age is sixteen, but there is no maximum age, Councilor Abbott, so, former lifeguard. So, you know, just please encourage people that you know who may be able to serve in this way. And for questions or more information, you can contact Terry Sewell Harris at 205-254-2189. Also, please consider joining us this Saturday, May 20th, for our first of many, we hope, power tools workshops. We will receive instructions and hand-on training on how to make simple repairs in the home. The workshop will take place at Legion Field in the park boardroom and the outdoor space just outside of the park boardroom from nine to one, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Space is limited, I think we can have about twenty participants, so please call the office at 205-254-2304 to register. If we run out of space for this first one, we will keep you on a waiting list so that we can organize additional classes. So even if this day doesn't work for you and you feel like it's something you're interested in, please reach out to us so that we can organize additional classes to accommodate those who have interest. Also, your ideas matter. Join the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity and the Riddle Properties Team at the Crossplex on Wednesday, May 24th at 6:00 PM for another community engagement session for, to support the design of the proposed Family Fund Center at the Crossplex. So, your voice matters. And then, please come out to the Crossplex on Thursdays if you'd like to join your neighbors and our partners, the Freshwater Land Trust, for a morning walk. Each Thursday, we meet up at Starbucks at about 7:55 to do a gentle one and a quarter mile or one and a half mile walk, all paces are welcome. Thank you, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Councilmore?
Yes ma'am, Madam President, I just want to say happy Mother's Day again to all the mothers. Today, I have the pleasure of being able to have the first Housing Policy Committee meeting with Councilor Clark and Councilor Quinn, today at 3:30 in the conference room on the third floor, in Conference Room D and E. So that's exciting. We also have a couple of Neighborhood Association meetings taking place. On Wednesday at 6:00 PM, we have South Woodline at the Woodline Library. Thursday at 6:00 PM, we have Parno's Vista, which will be meeting by Zoom. And then lastly, we also have our District Four Town Hall meeting that will be taking place this Monday, May 22nd at 6:00 PM at Woodline High School. So if you are a District Four resident, please, please, please come out, attend, have your questions answered, and I'd like to meet you. So, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Councilmore. Council Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The, there's a special call planning and zoning, is this on?
Yes.
There's a special call planning and zoning meeting scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, May 17th at 2:30 PM in Conference Rooms D and E. This is a special meeting to deal with an issue regarding the Smithfield Grant, and since we want to make sure that the city gets that grant, we're having this meeting tomorrow at 2:30, just prior to the committee of the whole meeting. So, it should be briefed, but it has to be done. Tonight, we have the Five Points South Neighborhood Meeting, it's at 6:00 PM at the Highlands United Methodist Church. And I want to encourage everyone, as I do every week, to either call 311 with your complaints about city services and problems that you see in the city, or download the My Beham 311 app where you can put an elaborate description of the problem, you can add photographs so that anyone can tell what the problem is, and then you can follow up on that app and find out what has been done or who the project has been handed off to. So I think it's one of the best things the city has going, and I hope that everyone will download that app on their, on their phone or iPad or whatever. And of course, in District Three, we continue to encourage our residents to go to the website, www.bhamdistricetwo.com, for all of the other announcements that we don't have time to make in our little three minutes up here right now. So, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Central City Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at 6:00 PM at the Downtown Central Library on the main floor. The North Avondale Neighborhood Association will meet Thursday, May 18th at 6:00 PM at the Martin Luther King Recreation Center located at 529 43rd Street North. And finally, South Side Neighborhood Association will meet Thursday, May 18th at 6:00 PM at the South Precinct Police Station. The Transportation Committee, the regularly scheduled committee meeting will take place on Monday, May 22nd at 2:00 PM in the third floor, City Hall Conference Rooms D and E. Especially looking forward to this upcoming committee meeting because we hope to have Ryan Matthew of the Birmingham Shuttlesworth International Airport coming to give us an overview about the airport and future plans. We'll also have Andre Davis from the Birmingham Parking Authority presenting on their strategic planning work. May 15th through 19th marks Infrastructure Week. Infrastructure Week is the national movement to highlight the importance of and call for continued investment in roads, rail, pipe, ports, and other infrastructures such as green infrastructure initiatives that strengthen the quality of life in our neighborhoods, improve people's health, create good jobs, and advance our national competitiveness. And just in reference to that, the Birmingham Parking Authority announced last week that it is beginning a strategic planning process to finally bring some coherency to the parking systems in the City of Birmingham in collaboration with city staff, I might say. One thing that, you know, citizens should be aware of is that, really from top to bottom, we're rethinking how we do parking in the City of Birmingham and trying to bring some coherency for a component of our infrastructure that we all depend on. So, there are opportunities to participate and provide feedback in BPA's strategic plan. I also will mention that the council is in the process of planning a public input opportunity to talk about or seek input from citizens about our ordinances pertaining to especially private lots, towing, and booting. Just this morning, while we were here in council meeting, I received yet another complaint about, you know, downtown parking and some of the enforcement operations. So, please anticipate a date being announced where we will provide a broad overview of sort of the legal landscape of where we are currently with respect to our ordinances and provide the public with an opportunity to share their experiences and suggestions about how the city's code could be improved. That concludes my announcements, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Council Williams?
Thank you. Southeast Lake Neighborhood will be meeting on January the 23rd at 6:00 PM at their normal place, which is East Lake United Methodist Church. And then Crestwood will be meeting January 23rd at 6:30 PM at the tavern, Crestwood Tavern. Also, happy Mother's Day to everyone that's celebrated, and obviously to my mother as well. And then happy birthday to Roz, which is India Bailey's mother, who is like a second mother to me, and so today is her birthday, so I know India's been busy with Mother's Day and her mom's birthday back to back, but special happy birthday to her, and that's all I got.
Very good, thank you very much. Council Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. We have several neighborhood meetings. Evergreen Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at 6:00 PM at the Evergreen Community Center located at 1867 16th Street North, Birmingham, 35204. East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight, 6:00 PM at Wilkerson Middle School located at 11611 Court West. Smithfield Estates Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight, also at 6:00 PM at Daniel Payne Middle School, 1500 Daniel Payne Drive. South Pratt Neighborhood Meeting will be tonight at Lively Hope Baptist Church, 905 Court T, Birmingham. Enslie Neighborhood will be held on Thursday, May 18th at 6:00 PM at the Enslie Rec Center that's located at 2800 Avenue K, Birmingham. Sandusky Neighborhood Community Meeting will be held tonight at the Jimmy Hudson Recurational Center, and that's at 237 Pratt Highway. And the next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 23rd at 1:00 PM in Conference Room, Council Floor, Third Floor, Conference Room D and E. Submit your agenda items by email, no later than Wednesday, May 17th at 12:00 noon, to If you have any questions or concern, feel free to contact our office at 254-2302. Also, Madam President, District Nine is also hosting a cleanup with the Moonland Fellowship Church, and that's on Saturday, May 20th, from 11:00 to 1:00 PM, starting at 10:00 AM. So the Moonland Church is located at 1140 Pratt Highway, Birmingham, Alabama, 35214. And that would be, that'll be a great cleanup, we're gonna clean up that Pratt Highway. And so also, Madam President, I do have some board vacancies announcement, the Jefferson County Blunt-St. Clair Mental Health Authority is looking to fill two vacancies on this Board of Directors. The qualification for the board members is outlined below. Members must be a resident of the area represented. Birmingham appointees must be a resident of Birmingham, the term is six years. The next announcement is the Jefferson County Intellectual and Development Disabilities Authority Incorporated is looking to fill two vacancies on this Board of Directors. The qualification for board members, they must be a resident of the area represented. Birmingham appointees must be a resident of Birmingham, the term is six years. The term is six years. You can submit your resumes to patrice.collins@birminghamal.gov. The deadline to submit those resumes will be June 6, 2023, by the end of the day. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to contact our office at 254-2302. Once again, I want to echo my colleagues' Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Also, Madam President, I also wanted to say I had a great opportunity to go to New York and be a part of the Safer Cities Conference. So it was a very great conference. I want to thank Dr. Carol Mason and John J. Collegeford invited me. So Kim does have a video. So we did hear a lot, learn a lot about public safety and hope to be implementing and keep implementing those things into the city of Birmingham. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Very excited for the work that you're doing and the travel that you had to attend that conference. We'll be showing that video at the end of our meeting. But glad you had safe travel. I didn't know you were accompanied by a very capable PIO. So thank you. All right, Councilor Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. Wanted to just invite everybody out to the Eastside Health Fair, which will be held on Saturday, May 20th at 9:00 AM at the Northeast YMCA. Want to shout out Neighborhood President Kilo Springs, Rashonda McNeil, for her leadership in really getting all of the neighborhoods together, work collectively as the entire Eastside to kind of put this on. So it's a great opportunity to learn more about health and healthy lifestyles. Be a lot of vendors on hand, so definitely come on out. Good for the entire family. Look forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you. Councilor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. As far as neighborhood meetings, we have Five Points South Neighborhood, which will be, which will meet tonight at 6:00 PM in the Social Hall of Highland United Methodist Church. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will be Monday, May 22nd at 3:30 PM. Submissions are due Wednesday, tomorrow up by noon. On May 19th, this Friday, Build Up will be having a bus stop cleanup from 9 to 12 on the western side. The D6 Office will be hosting cleanup this Saturday in the Arlington-West Stand community from 8 to 10:00 AM. We will meet at 8:00 AM at Hemp Hill Elementary School. Thanks to the Keep Birmingham Beautiful Committee and Sade for helping us out with the school supplies and setting up this cleanup. Also, starting in June, I think it's only in June, there'll be free Friday Flakes will be held at Railroad Park. Come early and grab a picnic and drinks from Michael's at the Boxcar. Regenerate Society presents College Declassified on May 20th at UAB Hill Center on the third floor for parents and students. For more information, visit thisisarsociety.com. The District 6 Office would like to send condolences to the Lima's family and the loss of Mr. Arthur. And then lastly, in response to the closing announcement of Golden Plate Factory, 175 families will lose their jobs at the beginning of July. And thank you to Jeff. He helped me out with partnering with Jeff State Career Center. And so we're going to have a job fair next Wednesday, May 24th. It will be from 10 to 2. We have over 25 employers, and really it's not just limited to those Golden Plate employees, but anybody who needs a job, it will be there. And so visit our website, www.d6bham.com. And I really wanted to do this because I think it was unfortunate thing that even us, because I know I talked to Madam President, Mayor Woodfin, we didn't even know that they were actually closing down that part of the district. And so, you know, they represented us, they'd like us to represent the people. And so this is the least I can do. So if you know any Golden Plate employees or anybody who needs a job, please tell them to come out. We have a lot of good employers, just a couple of them, US Foods, Pickly Wiggly, Milo's, Coca-Cola, Atlas, Jeff State. They'll be there so you can get classes to get certified and then get a job. And we have a lot more going. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Protem. Thank you for those announcements. And thank you for spearheading that opportunity to, for those displaced workers and workers that will be looking for employment, providing this opportunity to work with Jeff State and those employers. I know that Buffalo Rock that's located in District 7, they're constantly always looking for staff and workers who want to earn a livable wage. So we want to be sure to make them mindful of these opportunities. At this time, the report from District 7, we have several neighborhood cleanups. And I'd also like to announce bulk trash pickups in the following neighborhoods. Today, the Green Acres Neighborhood will meet at the Lifting Christ Worship Center. That's at 6:30 PM. There's also bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled today for the Green Acres Neighborhood. Tomorrow, there's bulk trash and brush pickup is scheduled for West Goldwire and Garden Highlands Neighborhoods. On Thursday, May 18th, the Germania Park Neighborhood Association will meet. That meeting is via conference call. It starts at 6:00 PM. And then on Friday, May 19th, the Garden Highlands Neighborhood Association will meet at the Mount Hilliard Baptist Church, and that meeting is in person at 6:00 PM. And then on Monday, there's bulk trash and brush pickup that's scheduled for the Industrial Center and Tarkley City Neighborhoods. There's also a neighborhood cleanup that's sponsored by the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood Association. They'll be cleaning up the Oxmoor Park, and that's on Saturday, May 20th. I do at this time want to just give some shout out and kudos for some of our council members. Last week, we did have an opportunity to participate in the National Alabama League of Municipalities, their annual convention. It was the 10th through the 13th. We had a lot of opportunity to network and learn from other municipalities within the state of Alabama. There are over 400 and plus municipalities within the state, from small, medium to large. And so it's a great opportunity to network with these fellow locally elected officials. A lot of information. We had the opportunity to participate in a lot of workshops. One that really interested me, gave some new information. It was about affordable housing and what's done. And this is really in a lot of small cities. But just interesting to see what different movements are out there to make living more affordable for our residents. And there were several other workshops. But I'm appreciative to those councilors that attended the meeting. During that meeting, we did have a council member that was voted as the Vice Chair of the Committee on Financial Administration and Intergovernment Relations, and that is our own Councilor Protem. And she's taking all that knowledge and information that she has by chairing our Budget and Finance Committee and will be able to be a resource on this League of Municipalities Committee. So thank you for stepping up and taking that assignment. Also, I'd like to congratulate fellow Councilor Clinton Woods. Councilor Woods has been nominated, or he's been asked to join the Unum Fellows 2023. There are 10 of them. They'll be working on climate and environmental justice as a cohort, trying to find ways to bring change for climate and environmental justice. So I want to just congratulate Councilor Woods on being selected for this particular group of fellows. This is the fourth cohort. I had the opportunity to be among the first, so we're just happy to see that that continues among members of our council. And last but not least, and I hope it's okay that I'm announcing it because I saw it on Facebook, but our council family is growing. Thanks to, thanks to Councilor Moore and his wife. So they're very excited to have this new addition being planned for their family. And we're very excited for them. Very excited for them. He's going to turn in the girl dead hat, and I think he's going to get him a little boy. So congratulations. Thank you. We look forward to that. September, October? Sometime.
Late September, early October.
Thank you very much. I did see you down there, Councilor Woods. I'm not making you part of this announcement. But I did just want to congratulate you on being part of that Unum. Yes. Yes, Council Clark? All right. Those are all of my announcements. I believe we have one more. Council Clark, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to invite everyone within the sound of my voice, especially the city, my colleagues on the council, to a very special unveiling and dedication of the Bush Hills Connections Complex. This is happening next Tuesday at 2:00 PM. It's a partnership, it's been a partnership between Bush Hills Connections, Bush Hills Neighborhood, the Birmingham City Schools, which allowed us to use the former Woodrow Wilson School site for the urban farm. But now we're renovating part of the building and being able to make that available for community use. So this is through the UAB Live Health Smart. We're one of the demonstration neighborhoods, and they assigned a partner, Harvard International, who's actually taken on, you know, actually investing in the renovations. So their employees have been volunteering for a long time to make some of the school available to the public. And the other parts just cleaned off and sealed off, cleaned out and sealed off for now. So it's a big day for the leaders in Bush Hills. So if you all can join them and me, we'll be out there next Tuesday at 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe Councilor Williams?
Yeah, since we were announcing things to separate, I think that one of our Joint Chiefs, Chaz, and his wife are also expecting in October. So I think that we need to recognize that first family of Birmingham, which also will be a boy.
And I think it's a boy as well. Right, we saw those sneakers on the announcement. So very good. Well, we're growing and all over the city, so we're very excited. Thank you all very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, no! We have, at this time, no more announcements or pregnancies. Madam Clerk, if you'll read the speaker's list.
Yes, ma'am. The first speaker is Latia Alatia Banks, Jr.
They think he's left. Go ahead.
Gabriel Caban Cubero.
Thank you very much.
I haven't left.
No, you have not. You've got three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much for having me. My name is Gabriel Caban Cubero. I live at 2931 10th Court South, Apartment 635205. Hey, Councilor Abbott. So thank you all, councilors. I serve as the Campaign Director for People's Budget Birmingham. It's written on my shirt. And we are a campaign dedicated to giving our constituents a say in how their tax dollars are being spent. I want to take a brief moment to point out these amazing organizers over here. Y'all can stand really quickly. This is just a portion of our team, and I'm here today with good news and a little bit of an offering. So over the last few months, People's Budget Birmingham has been able to reach or call and knock doors of over 1,500 constituents. And we've been able to have conversations with close to 300 of those folks. And these conversations average 10 to 15 minutes apiece. So that's so many hours worth of conversations. So far, we've been embedded in Districts 4, 8, and 9. That's Councilors Moore, Clark, and Tate, respectively. And, but we want to do a little bit more. So we wanted to be a resource to all of you. We recognize and we lament that in 2016, amendments to the Mayor-Council Act made it a little bit more difficult for each of you to be able to influence and inform the city budget-setting process. I would say it even makes it more difficult for each of you to represent your constituents to the best of each of your abilities. And so here's kind of what we would love to be able to support all of you with. Over the next few weeks, we are going to be reaching out to many of you to schedule one-on-one meetings or small group meetings with you and your constituents so they can share some of their budget priorities. In a few weeks, we will also be releasing a public People's Priorities Report. We did this in 2020 as well. We also have the time, energy, materials, and resources to be able to support all of you in speaking with your constituents and getting to know what some of their priorities are. And we can also share our survey with all of you. We brought a few flyers if anybody wants some. And lastly, and I would say most importantly, we want to be a resource, an expert, and a body of support in helping all of you regain your budget-setting powers. We cannot take the lead on that, but we can support each of you because it is in our best interest as it is in yours. So I wanted to say how you can reach me at gabri@peoplesbudgetbham.org. That's spelled G-A-B-R-I at peoplesbudgetbham.org. And yeah, thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for providing those resources. Thank you. Councilor Protem?
Yes, ma'am. If you will come back, just come back. It's more like a comment. I do appreciate you all's efforts. I know there is, you know, all of us have campaigned and canvassed, so there is a lot of hard work. Let me say this, you're almost about three months too late, right? And I know one of my districts is one of those you didn't make it to. So I do have to ask, and it doesn't really need to answer, how can you talk to me about what my constituents need if you haven't even made it over to my district, right? And I do respect you all. You all are very young, and I really want to commend you for that. May I suggest, I'm still willing to meet with you all. If you can continue this process, and then maybe at the beginning of next year, we can meet with you all to have those priorities, and then we can talk to the mayor's office about it and see if it aligns. Because right now, you can only give us a third of the city. And so I know I've done a survey with my district. It was at the town halls, and it does matter when you ask for their input. But I will like to say that, you know, I think it's, well, I can't speak on anybody else. It's just kind of hard to really say, okay, you have priority lists and you haven't gotten everybody. So my ask is to continue your good works and to come back to us for the next year's budget, because it is hard to amend the budget at this point.
Absolutely. May I respond, Councilor Smith?
Of course.
Last year, there was one employee high. And then near the end of last year is when we actually piloted our deep canvassing program. And so we reached close to 200 people last year. And honestly, it's due to capacity, which is why we want to be a resource to all of you because each of you are also embedded in your districts. We can only do what we have the capacity to do, and we want to do it excellently. So thank you for that feedback, and let's make it happen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council Clark.
I just wanted to commend you for the approach. I've participated in, I guess, some participatory budgeting phone calls. Like a long time ago, there was some meetings. And I'm intrigued by the process, but I do think you're spot on that, you know, the design for participation in the budget, as it should be, is really broken because by design, you know, the people should be able to come before this body of elected representatives, and then the budget might actually, this body might actually change the budget, you know, in response to some of that input. So it doesn't function that way right now. And I think the most basic level of participation and balance in the budget powers is not nonexistent at this point. So I appreciate you for bringing that up and recognizing that. And I think, you know, educating citizens on even just that fact that, you know, our system is now not working as it was designed so that we, as your elected representatives, can represent your interests in the budget process. I mean, that's, it just doesn't, I mean, we're limited in our ability to do that. And I'm not saying we don't try, because we do try. And under this, you know, limited construct, the mayor makes an effort as well to consider, you know, our needs in our districts. But I just wanted to commend you, and I think, you know, any kind of campaigns where we can engage our citizens in the civic process and awaken people to, you know, how things should work and can work with their input is commendable. And I hope though, because in some of the early conversations, I heard citizens wanting the city to do healthcare and all kinds of things that just really aren't our role. So I hope that your process can have some filters around what the city's responsibilities are. I'll just leave it at that.
May I respond, Councilor Clark?
I don't know.
She chairs the meeting.
You have to ask me that, but it's.
Okay, Madam President. May I respond?
That's okay, yes.
Top priority is potholes. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Yes, hold on, Dr. Quinn, then I'll go to you. Dr. Quinn?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say that, you know, unlike many, or I'd say the vast majority of me- say the vast majority of municipalities across the United States, Birmingham has a highly developed neighborhood participation system. And it's not perfect, and, you know, a lot of folks want to see some innovation there and improvement. However, you know, one of the things that they do have some influence over is we actually provide funding to each of those neighborhood associations, and each of those neighborhood associations, which, you know, are just defined groups of residents, have the capacity to direct those funds. So I think, you know, again, it's far from perfect, and there's a lot of potential for improvement, but I think that actually meets the strict definition of participatory budgeting. Collectively, across all 99 neighborhoods, there's well over, or at least the last estimate that I have, there's well over $3 million collectively. And, you know, those funds can definitely have an impact as, at that neighborhood level. And I say that from being a neighborhood officer for over 10 years myself. And so, you know, perhaps as you guys are doing your work, you can, you know, explore the possibility of potentially expanding upon that existing system instead of, you know, us maybe creating something entirely new. That being said, there's, I think there's lots of desire and opportunity for innovation and modernization. So, you know, just wanted to offer that up.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Gabriel, thank you for your effort. And I'm not going to expound on what has already been said, because I think most counselors have spoke to, you know, what was needed to be said, but as Counselor Smith has said, just reach out. I mean, because, you know, we stay engaged, you know, in the neighborhoods. We've heard the cries of the neighborhood, and I think the participatory budgeting, and as Counselor Quinn said, this could be a teachable moment for, you know, constituents, you know, showing them that they do have, they got neighborhood funds, they can use them for projects, and, you know, thinking the mayor for his collective effort and investments that he has made in the communities with housing, road paving. Of course, you said potholes, that's a big thing, you know, in, you know, most of these communities, but I'm available, as Counselor Smith has said. I'm sure we all are available. So I think the participatory process is, you know, a need. It's warranted across the country, and I've stated, and it has a great impact, you know, when everybody is educated in the civic process and know how the civic process and the flow of that goes. But thank you for your effort, your team. I know the one man show. You know I know. So thank you. So just stay engaged.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we appreciate you. Thank you. Let's again communicate and stay in touch. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Douglas Young.
Good morning, Mr. Young. Do you give us your address? You've got three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Councilman, also President. I genuinely appreciate you guys being here. My address, I actually stay in Atlanta, but I'm moving my residence back to Birmingham. A little bit about myself, I'm going to make this very quick, you guys. At 19, I was the youngest person to do one of the largest events for the city of Birmingham. The city of Birmingham and the county gave me the Bow Wow Auditorium. I hosted what was called the Black Heritage Extravaganza. It was amazing. We had 95 seven jams out. It was more like church than church was. A lot of people would say we brought doctors. I did a modeling fashion show. I had radio personalities. I had lawyers. I had so many people all in this one facility at the age of 19. A little bit about myself, I moved to the city of Atlanta. I own a company called Freeze Cream. I'm very familiar with Councilman Moore. I grew up with him. I started a company called Freeze Cream. The company Freeze Cream is Georgia's first rolled ice cream company. If you guys have ever heard of rolled ice cream, my company was the fourth one in the entire United States, the first one in the state of Georgia. I've opened up six locations, Roswell, Johns Creek, Helen, Georgia, which is the second largest tourist town in the state of Georgia. I also have one in Cartesville. I have a manufacturing facility as well. With that being said, I currently just franchised two of my locations. I've been one of the most successful African-American individuals coming out of the city of Birmingham. I've also started a company called the Andy Green Festival, where I hosted a festival in the city of Duluth. I've worked with the public and private sector. I worked with the city of Roswell, the city of East Point, and the city of Atlanta. I've been vegan, well, I actually say plant-based. I've been plant-based eight years, because when you say vegan, a lot of people put a stigma on that. But I've been plant-based eight years, and I would have 3,000 to 5,000 people at all of my festivals. And what happened was, each city would contact me because they know at all these festivals, I would take all this data, and I had all these data of all these people, 3,000, 4,000 people from each city. People would travel from Tennessee, from Birmingham, from Texas, just to come to my festival. If you guys have Instagram, you can look up Freeze Cream, F-R-E-E-Z-E-C-R-E-A-M. Again, I'm Douglas. I'm the CEO and owner of that word, of that entire company. And what I want to do for the city of Birmingham, because you don't notice a lot of changes once you're in it. It's like, when you see yourself every day, you see a little growth, but you don't see it. But when you're outside looking in from where it used to be, you see that growth. And I see growth in Birmingham. So first and foremost, I want to say thank you to you guys. Y'all are doing an amazing job. Sometimes you don't hear that enough. People don't tell you enough, especially with myself. I didn't have investors. I didn't get any loans. I didn't have a team of people behind me. I built this literally from one ice cream cart in a gas station, from one ice cream cart in a gas station, and seven years later, I opened up six stores. And the value that I know I brought, as far as customer service, as far as profitability, as far as community, to have someone that say, hey, I want to buy one of your companies or your stores, that's a big value. That's something that's undescribable. So with the city of Birmingham, what I want to do is I want to bring my expertise and show the young people that you can make it. I got nominated by the city of Atlanta for the runner out of 100 businesses in the United States. I was one of those businesses. In the city hall, they nominated me. I have corporate accounts with Arthur Blank with Home Depot. I have corporate accounts with Comcast. I have corporate accounts with Johns Creek Hospital. I do all of these corporate accounts. My company does all of them. So what I want to do is bring them my expertise and my counsel to the city of Birmingham to show how I can be of assistance, whether it's innovation, whether it's emerging youth into business, teaching them LLCs, S Corps, C Corps, teaching them how to get funding as far as business loan, how to build that credit, also how to be a part of the community. And last but not least, I want to also be a council or help the city councilmen understand blockchain, because the dollar bill is losing value. A lot of people think right now that prices are going up, but it's actually the dollar bill, what we're spending to buy things is drastically decreasing. So we have to understand.
Your time is up, but thank you for bringing this information to us.
You're very welcome.
We do have our Department of Innovation and IEO Economic Development Team that you may want to get in touch with that department for some of these ideas. We're always looking for new ideas, and that would be the avenue that we can take that up with the city. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. My pleasure. Thank you, you guys.
All right. We want to thank the officers on duty today, Officer Cedric Pinkert, Officer Darian Johnson, Officer Tyler Carter, and Officer DeMarcus Blanding. Thank you so much for your service today. Counselor Williams, you'll take us out?
Yeah, yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye. All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.